If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could start with just a moment of silence for all of those that were killed, wounded, and affected with this weekend's violence. Thank you very much. So first, we'll start with public comment.
Good evening. Thank you for the moment of silence. War is bad from all sides, and it's disappointing. My name is Markin Tokley. I reside at 1550 Georgetown Drive. I am a precinct leader delegate in Bloomfield Township. I'd like to make a comment on item number six regarding the wireless network. I believe it's inappropriate to have access points outside of the buildings, especially with sensitive voter data available inside the township, plus other information that might be considered proprietary. So that's number one. Number two, based on Danny Walsh's comment during the last meeting, I went and reviewed the August 28th report for the retirement funds, the retirement trusts, and I found this statement. If the township contributes 1.25 million in excess of the benefits payments in accordance with the funding policy each year, the investments earn exactly the assumed interest rate each year. That investment policy sounds very similar to the corrective action plan that was approved by the state of Michigan. Yet further on, on sites 33, for example, and 34 regarding building inspection and cable studio, it says that no additional investments were made. Yet if we go to the township website, we see investments being made and contributions being made to building inspection and cable studio. And that's inconsistent with the audit statements, and it's inconsistent with the GASB filings. Further on, it says water and sewer funded contributions will continue to be based on the actuarial reports. Well, those actuarial determined contributions are inconsistent with the funding policy that was approved by the board and the state of Michigan. It also required water and sewer customers to pay more into the fund than others. So especially considering all property owners are not tied to water and sewer, that's a concern, and it also occurred during the water and sewer litigation. So that's interesting. So the 1.4 million I've been stating seems to be fairly consistent with the overpayments for water and sewer. We also paid $1 million more than the actual contributions over the last three years, and that's in the GASB filing. Lastly, the split for public safety was never covered regarding investment income. Mr. Showstack was in the meeting approving that. Treasure keeps never mentioned a dollar value to be transferred. They were treated unjustly and unfairly, and that seems consistent with the report. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here for public comment? Okay, then we will close public comment. We'll go to approving the board minutes of September 26th? 28th, 26th, sorry. And unless there's any changes or modifications, I'd look for a motion for approval. So moved. Motion by trustee Murray. Trustee Fauci, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. And next, we have our Bloomfield Hills Schools Building and Site Sinking Fund Millage Renewal Proposal, which will be presented by Dr. Randy Leepa, who is the interim superintendent for Bloomfield Hills School District.
Yes, good evening. And I want to just thank you so, so much for allowing me to spend time with you today and talking not only to you but to the community about a ballot proposal that we have on for November 7th. It is called the sinking fund, and it's a proposal that is actually a renewal that we've had in place here in Bloomfield since 2005. So one of the things that we're working on right now is really doing everything we can to inform the community about the ballot proposal so they know what it is. So we're on an effort to get to as many places as we can to share information to the community about what the proposal is. And so again, just want to really thank you for doing that. Want to thank City Clerk Brook for all of his support as it relates to getting all of the precincts ready for not only for this year but for future years with the changes in the schools. And of course Supervisor Walsh, she's been a remarkable advocate for our school system. Appreciate everything that you continue to do in partnership with us. So the sinking fund, what is a sinking fund, first of all? It is a special ballot millage that school districts can ask their local communities to support that can only be used for very specific purposes. It really has been set aside for renovations, repairs, some capital equipment like buses and technology. And this is something that's been available for school districts and utilized since the early to mid 90s. And districts which have utilized sinking funds have utilized them to make sure that these renovations can happen, but still would not impact the overall general education budget for the school system. And so when you think about the general operating budget for a school system, what that pays for are teachers, supplies, the electricity to run the schools, bus drivers, those types of day-to-day activities. And if there are some major repairs that have to happen that school districts have to somehow come up with the funding for, that will come in competition with those dollars that are utilized in the classroom. And so the state of Michigan set up this process where you could actually ask the community that you live in for a special millage that can take care of some of those renovation projects. And so that's what a sinking fund is. Very regulated from the state in regards to what you can spend the money on, specifically for renovations and repairs of schools. And that's what this school system has done since 2005. It's been renewed actually twice since 2005. Once in 2010 for the millage that was retiring in 2014, and then again in 2018. The school system right now is only asking for this millage for three years as it wants to again evaluate where it's at with its facilities. There's a rather significant bond issue that was passed by the schools for school facilities just in 2020. One of the big questions that we receive is, well, if you did this big bond issue to fix up the schools in 2020, why do you need to continue to utilize a sinking fund to renovate and repair the schools? And it's an excellent question. And so when you think about that 2020 bond issue, those renovations and repairs really had to do with the school district reorganizing itself, going from K3, K4 schools and then middle schools that were either four or five through eight. We had three middle schools. And we basically right-sized the school system over that period of time to have two middle schools now instead of three. And we've utilized some of those other facilities for elementary schools, and the renovations by and large that were done with the 2020 bond issue were to see that vision through to where we can really right-size the school system into the future. And so the 2020 bond issue again was to do that work to make sure that that reorganization of the school system could be done, and the schools were renovated to take care of that. But there's still ongoing renovations not covered in the 2020 bond issues that are needed, and they're needed on an ongoing basis. The school district actually last year spent the entire year to study where it was at with its overall renovation needs. They identified well over $100 million of ongoing renovations, which isn't a shock for any organization that's our size with the amount of square feet that we take care of. And so it's looking at this particular continuation of a millage of about .7 mils. It was passed for 1.5 mils originally. Was reduced down when you passed a millage for the high school back in the 2010s. And it stayed at that low level of .7 mils ever since. It generates a little over $3 million per year for the school system, and it is used for a variety of things around. It could be site work. It could be taking care of roofs, doors. There are a variety of other projects that weren't covered in the bond issue that we're taking a look at to tie into some of the playground work that has been done in school systems, water mains that need to be updated, those types of sort of, you know, behind-the-scenes major systems within the school structures that we want to make sure that we're maintaining and repairing and replacing on a somewhat regular basis. And so again, three years, .7 mils, it's a renewal. We've had this millage since 2005, and we're hoping that the community will take a look at this again because the board has asked for it for three more years. For the next three years, it would generate $3 million to continue that ongoing renovation work in the schools. So again, appreciate the opportunity to share it with you. We're trying to get to as many venues as we can, and we really appreciate the opportunity to share in the community through your venue, which is a little different than our venues. Much appreciated the opportunity tonight. Happy to answer any quick questions that you might have. I know you've got a lot of business. Otherwise, I'll move on. And I'm actually doing a presentation to the Bloomfield Hills High School PT on the road in about 10 minutes. So I'll be heading down there.
Anyone have any questions?
Well, I just have one comment, and the clerk may want to help me with this. But when you say, "When and where do I vote?", you say election day is Tuesday, November 7th. Polls are open 7:80 p.m. There are a lot more options to vote.
That's true. We will be running, of course, the normal absentee process. And this will be the first time we're running early voting. So nine days of early voting will start at the end of October. I forget the exact date. Starting on the 28th of October for nine consecutive days after that, 8 to 4 every day, except for Thursday, will be noon to 8 at the Bloomfield Township Library.
Yes, we know you have that information on your website, and we're linking to your website off of our website also. But I appreciate you mentioning that so the community at large can hear that additional voting information.
Just update your literature.
Will do.
I may say one more thing too, which is I want to thank you for your support of elections. The Bloomfield Schools District hosts many precincts. You also host one of our drop boxes at the former Eastover Elementary School.
Right.
I want to thank the school district for that support of elections in this community. It's vital to the operation of democracy here, so thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you for everything you do.
Okay, well, continue your great work. Appreciate the partnership with the schools. And continued success to all of us. Thank you.
Thanks for the explanation for the community.
Next, we have Consider Approval of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Expenditure for the New Phone System, presented by our Director of Technology, Will Bavancheck.
Good evening. So IT Department is asking for approval using the ARPA expenditure of $151,053.98 to replace our current phone system. Little background on why we chose the vendor. It's Tacoma Systems, which actually has a reference with the city of Troy, the city of Sterling Heights. We actually did go and price out hosted solutions and on-premises solutions. And one of the things we always do, and really with anything we go forward, there's going to be some type of disaster recovery component to it. So with an on-premise phone system, we're actually buying two. So from one to house here, one to house at a co-location. And we have the ability to, if we were to go to a co-location, provide cell phone direct access to the phone system for 30 people. So we figured the, you know, with the elected officials, department heads, deputies, and other people that we find as part of the incident response plan would still have access to the phone system using direct, you know, direct numbers and not have to call directly from their cell phone. We'd still be able to use extensions to transfer. And we actually did price out the hosted phone systems. Kind of came in anywhere from $72,000 to $85,000. Some of them have expenses of up to $180,000 down payment to start. And financially, it just didn't seem right. And there's some overlap in some of the other software we're already utilizing. So we're asking for that if there's any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Will?
Oh, one thing, I actually did one more thing. IT actually is presented with a little bit of an issue sometimes with when money is allocated. So we originally had talked about allocating in December. Our phone system is actually out of support as of September. So we could purchase an additional year for, it was $9,975. And we'd be replacing that phone system within two months anyway. So we kind of figured that was not a smart move with that money.
And that was Will that brought that forward of, you know, we could save some money by moving this up just a couple of months. So I appreciate you noticing that and finding it.
Yeah, there's be a few of those coming down.
Do you have any questions?
No, unless there's questions, ready to make a motion on that?
I think we're good.
Support.
So motion by trustee Barnett, support by trustee Fauci, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. And Will's going to be up there for a little bit. Next, we have Consider Approval of ARPA Expenditure for the Storage Area Network Replacement.
Before we get started here, a storage area network, this is where we house really every single piece of data we have in the township, including all our servers, anything that even this laptop may connect to. We're kind of the same situation there. Our renewal comes up in November. To renew that for the next three years is a little over $32,000. So we are actually asking to replace our current sand at the cost of $75,568.91. We're able to take advantage, Dell's coming up on the end of their quarters. We're actually able to take advantage of a Dell buyback program. So typically, they want to buy back the sand, and they want the sand back to us. We've negotiated to allow us to still get that $15,000 buyback, but they'll let us keep the equipment, and then we could use that at a co-location. It'll help with our upcoming disaster recovery plan.
Anyone have any questions on this? Your fellow department heads are probably jealous that you're getting away with not doing PowerPoints.
Usually with IT, I just have to talk to you guys before.
You should be having all the cool IT stuff though to show us, right?
Pictures.
Well, we're asking for it.
Anyone have any questions? And if not, I'd look for a motion.
A motion to spend up to $75,568.91 for just a new storage area network.
Support.
Trustee Klinsky, support by trustee Fauci, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. So next, again with Will, we have Consider the Approval of ARPA Expenditure for the Campus Wireless Network.
Similar situation here. We're actually replacing existing wireless, but a little back information. So coming up in December, our current network infrastructure is going to be completely replaced. So this wireless, it's done by the same vendor. So we get what I call a single pane of glass to basically view into our network. It enhances our security. Administration is actually kind of a one-place administration of all of our network. And it actually, it will increase our security without getting into details tenfold. It's just from where we're at now to where we will be, it's just incomparable. So since we are actually doing that project in December, instead of taking that network down twice, we would like to do kind of, as part of that additional project, refresh the whole network at that point.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a statement.
Yeah.
So I just want to mention about the, there was a statement concerning sensitive voter data and the wireless network. And I know we're on the same page about this, but the sensitive voter data doesn't reside on our network here. It resides on a state network that is also, you know, very secure, and this has nothing to do with that.
No, in fact, all of our voting equipment, laptops, voting machine count, everything, it never touches our network at all. At any given point, it's ever plugged in or ever connected to a wireless network. It's all standalone. We do one gold image, and even when we update, we download the images and transform instead of ever connecting anything to the network. So that's a non-issue for us.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Great for the clarification for anyone that has any concern though. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion. It's certainly a very necessary upgrade and glad that you bring it to us.
Thank you.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support by trustee Murray, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. And again, we have Will for our Consider Approval of Audio/Video and Laptop Quotes for the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA 2023 Emergency Operations Center EOC Grant Program.
Do we also have Chief Laurie with us? I'm doing the audio.
He's going to be a voice from above. This was John's dream was to be the voice from above.
Yeah, 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 yeah. We are actually recommending, this was part of a larger grant, and this is, whatever we're recommending is kind of what IT was tasked for presenting as part of that grant. And the fire department, police department together, it asked us to put together bids for audio/video laptops, things like that. So this is actually combined, so there's a few parts to this. The total cost for our section is $155,572.43. We actually, for the main part of this, the EOC, the build of the room, we chose vendor AVI. They've actually done, there's several reasons for that. So we put this out, we were able to get several bids on it, and then they arranged anywhere from $91,000 to $210,000. This company in particular has specialty in security operations centers, emergency operations centers. They've actually done, there's a couple of references they provided us with. There's Ascension Health, they did their security operations center, well over a million-dollar security operations center. They've also done work with MDOT, so they did their, I hope I'm pronouncing this right, but it's Semtalk Center in Detroit. They come very highly recommended. They have a lot of military experience. They've done plenty of work for the federal government. They're a local company out of Wixom, so we do get local support out of them as well. Very professional, very, their proposals were night and day compared to some of the other ones we've received, and very confident in them as a vendor. The other smaller pieces are laptops, you know, which we have to have when we call it, or we need to have laptops ready. We need to have the cart to house them in to make sure that they're updated. And there's some other small pieces, like some charging cords and things like that. Any questions on that? And if we wanted to expand on what that grant is, I'm sure John would be able to speak to that.
And we did get ahead of this, you know, wanting, we applied for this over a year ago. It got accepted. But having that mass casualty incident to run through and look for areas where we can improve, I'm very thankful we did this because when we all got that training call of "Report to EOC", none of us would have had laptops with us. And that room wasn't set up for the EOC at that moment. So it was taking anywhere from an hour to two hours to get set up and ready to go that you've lost versus having a true EOC that now will be able to, locked room, everything's set up, ready to go, and it's turnkey. You walk in, your EOC is starting right out of the gate. So that was one of the things that we thought was going to be an issue. And when we did the event, we saw how necessary this is. So some people have asked, "Why do you need new laptops?" It's not about new laptops. It's about one that literally stays there for that person with that duty. One stays here for this, and it's ready to go. So it gives us another couple of hours of jumping on that emergency issue.
And it expands some of our flexibility because we don't know, we may be calling different people in the EOC at different times, and those laptops need to be able, shared amongst users or available to really anyone that we bring into the EOC. And in the past, we've actually kind of recycled older equipment into that area. And to be honest, it's just too important of a spot where we need to be using, you know, if we deem a computer that's not worthy to use in the treasury or in the IT department, it really shouldn't be in the EOC.
I just have a couple of questions. One is just something strange on page 110. It's showing totaling things up, and then it says Dell EMC Networking, and it's crossed out, and then the total stays the same as if it wasn't crossed out. I'm not sure what that means.
Okay, I'm sorry. So when Dell proposed the cart, there's a cart where the laptops reside in, and they charge and get updated. They also have a switch to connect to our network. One of the reasons, going back to our extreme networks, is Dell's switches are very, very, very expensive. So we just took that off, and we're going to, we have another switch all ready to go for that, that we just didn't need to spend the money on.
Well, I figured that, but then at the total, it doesn't take that off on the next page. So it's probably just a technical thing. But I understand the importance of it, and I understand, you know, the management of the cart system. I used to manage one myself years ago, and the viability of that. But is it only, like, is it just going to sit in a room? Are people going to use those computers from time to time when you have certain exercises?
Well, they'll be used for, if we were able to do tabletop exercises and, you know, and EOC-related things. But anything, it's part of this grant, and the EOC must be dedicated to be an EOC. So you can't host other events in there or give those laptops out for other people to use for different purposes.
Well, just in terms of the EOC committee, you know, being familiar with them is part of it.
Oh, absolutely.
They use them from time to time. That was really the...
And John, you may be able to speak this as well. The fire department and police department both have done a great job in doing some tabletop exercises throughout the year, and they're going to be used during that time. And obviously, IT will monitor them and bring them out to make sure everything's okay. But those tabletop exercises do happen throughout the year. And so the laptops will be used at the time.
We've done it at least three times this year where it's two- to three-day events. You kind of lock yourself in there.
Right.
Once it was tornadoes are hitting. Another one was after the mass casualty in there, we then did what would have happened for the first two hours. So everybody is, so these are two- to three-day drills.
Right.
That's why sometimes when people say they're not available, they're in meetings, sometimes it's actually because we're literally locked in there doing a drill for EOC.
Okay, no, that's good. I just wanted to make sure they weren't just locked up for like when the one emergency comes in. If you're not actively using them, monitoring them, familiar with them, it would be, that would lose some time.
Yeah, and they've done a great job with practicing. And, you know, every time we have one of these tabletop exercises, it brings up new issues that we need to take care of, which is what they're designed to do.
What the drills are designed to do. Okay, great, thank you so much.
Do you want to add more?
Yeah, they will be able to have the passwords, and everybody will have access to them quickly. And they'll all have the pre-programmed websites with the state of Michigan's EOC in compatibility there. It's just going to enhance efficiencies really across the board where we've always had people show up down there, they don't have a computer, or they can't remember their password, and they can't get into the system. This is really going to make this system turnkey, ready to go. So if we ever need it, we are 100% ready and ready to go to work.
I can add too, I mean, in addition to the use in the tabletops, I mean, this year we had, you know, significant training by the leadership and elected officials on emergency management, online training, which was, I don't know, it was pretty extensive. It took me about a week to fill those classes.
There was at least 14 hours worth of that that you had to do on your own time.
Right, and a week and a half of training in person in the conference room, which become a dedicated EOC or Emergency Operations Center. So yeah, there's been a great focus on this issue within the township this past year or so, and this is a good investment, I think, especially since we get a grant from the federal government through the work of our congressman, so.
And that's the beauty is although we can do up to hopefully one of these big events, the amount of money and time and planning that goes into that versus us being able to go in and train with, there are already like pre-done scenarios, so we can go in there. It's a lot more efficient and a lot cheaper for us to just say, "Get to the EOC, do this training." And it's our time away from our desk versus $25,000 to $30,000 to get volunteers and...
Right, right. And there's just having a dedicated EOC that's not used for other purposes, and the phones are in place, the laptops are in place, everything's ready to go. And that's where, you know, if an emergency happens, you need to have everything where it is and dedicated for what its use is.
And available.
Yeah. It'll help us get to logistics faster.
There's food, there's water, there's...
Yeah, there's that too.
One of those grants go, you know, feed you for 10 weeks, food packs in there?
And one thing that we did learn, a lot of these things built into this grant as part of the EOC when we put this proposal together, was from the inefficiencies we found working down there during the COVID, the six months of COVID, we couldn't, with conference calls, we had no ability to do conference calls, and we really had no ability to do a lot of these FaceTime or these new emerging communications platforms that were down there. We couldn't put that information on a TV. And we just learned a lot during that, and we built those, what we learned into this proposal to rectify those issues.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you, John. I'd like to make the motion, if we're ready, to approve the audiovisual laptop quotes for the FEMA EOC Grant Operations Center.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Barnett.
Support, I'm sorry.
Tried to steal it.
I know, I'm sorry.
I know, I'm sorry.
That does pass. Thank you, Will.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, John. And John's gonna stay with us for a little bit because he'll be available in case there's questions on number 11, too. Okay, so next we have consider approval of ARPA expenditure for document management consultant presented by Clerk Martin Brook.
Okay. And not to, you know, show up our IT director, I have a PowerPoint on this issue. And Tom is gonna help me go through these quick slides to support the memo that's in the packet. So our present record management situation, you know, we have historical records that are almost 200 years old, that are in central storage. Some of those records have been scanned, about 1,075 historical records were scanned and by a storage service. There's really a simple scanning process, like an electronic file cabinet, really. And they are full text searchable, but it's clunky. We have a lot of electronic records. There's a shared drive where records are divided by department with thousands of subfiles and duplicates and redundancies and multiple copies, and really an absence of any consistency. There's an excess of 600 gigabytes of data, and they're just constantly growing every hour. So, gosh, you know, it's been maybe a year ago that Danny and Brian and I, and a couple of the leader, department leaders, were in the storage area talking about how daunting it will be to transition from where we are today to a more comprehensive electronic solution concerning all of our documents and why we'd want to do it. And it was discussed that, that, you know, that there's professionals that do this, there's, you know, records management professionals, there's library professionals, people who could really help the township make a move. And so there were, we started a conversation about doing this, and then, you know, with the availability of ARPA funds, it seemed like a perfect opportunity. The consultant is gonna help us with a couple of things. First is to do a, rather than doing a vendor approach, we wanted to do a needs analysis approach. So almost every township that we could find, or city that, that went with a solution for document management, would bring in the, the regular, you know, crowd, and they'd all talk about what their software did, and they'd pick one. And invariably, what happens is there's a lot of square pegs being fitted around holes, and there's a lot of compromises from department to department. And one way that we wanted to go a different direction was to really identify exactly what our needs were, to have the assistance of an expert in this area, and then move towards selecting a software that's going to meet all of our stuff, rather than just try to be our round peg into a square hole. Each department during this process will be met with and discussed, and they'll define their own document needs, their own workflow needs, and their own preferences that they have with regard to working with materials, both, both past, present, and future. And they'll collaborate with township to ensure that, that we're meeting all of our compliance requirements, our, you know, record preservation for things that are important and old and, and wonderful. Efficiency is, is one of the main goals that we have here, to have a system that's gonna allow us to be faster in our work and more, and more accurate. And openness, the ability to, for instance, for FOIA requests, to be able to find what's been requested sooner and more thoroughly, and provide what's, what's been asked for. They're gonna really help us identify the key needs, possible solutions, be vendor neutral, which is really important. We didn't want someone who was, you know, best buddies with X versus Y, and prepare an RFP that would be, you know, satisfiable by multiple vendors. And importantly, guide the transition from where we are at today to implementation of the software. And for me, that's one of the really important ones I want to quickly highlight, which is, you know, getting to the point of finding the right vendor and implementing is one thing, but, you know, we really do run some super lean organizations here. And asking them to engage in all of these steps on their own, even though each of these departments really want a solution, they desire a solution, is really too much to ask for, and it's gonna set us up for failure. In fact, once again, we have in the past gone through this process and, and didn't really end up with, with a product that was useful for us. So this investment is, is to not only help us prepare for identifying a solution, to also identify a solution, and then be available to help us transition to, to this solution so that we, our chances of success are very high. We sent out a proposal and, in July, and received three, or an RFP in July, we received three responses. All three were very interesting. You could see a variety of price points on this. Oakland University Public Affairs Research Laboratory, which is a couple of professors from the School of Public, Public Affairs, made an interesting proposal. There's a company called Security Archives, which is based in Detroit, and also has facilities in Crow's Point. And then another outfit out of Marysville, Tennessee, came in with these different sorts of numbers. We ended up, there was a team of folks that got together to do this review, and we ended up recommending of going to the next step with two of them, which is the Oakland University proposal and the Security Archives. Averro gave us a very impressive presentation of materials, but in the end, didn't seem to be providing the type of value that justified the difference in price really at all. So they were the outlier that we left behind. There was a multi-department review team that met, including our fearless IT director, Will, who's here with us. We have someone from, myself and Dina from the Clerk's Department, and an individual from assessing, who I put down PPO, because she also previously worked and had a lot of records requests from PPO. So we had one person really representing both of those organizations. And again, this isn't to define what's needed, or to anyway limit what will be happening next, as far as the contributions and input from every single department. So we reviewed the proposals against 16 different criteria, and all three bidding entities did have a compelling case. As I said earlier, Aveo was eliminated because of the, just no, no difference we could see. The last two were interviewed, and in the end, we looked at the two and recommended Security Archives. The Public Affairs Research Lab at Oakland University did present themselves as a knowledgeable team of PhD faculty and deserved to be a finalist, but they really lacked the experience doing something really just exactly like this. I didn't have any doubt that they could do this, but at the same time, they were going to be learning themselves a little bit, at the same time that we were learning. Whereas Security Archives had a team that was led by a true national records management expert with unparalleled depth of knowledge in preparing similar types of studies. And the group unanimously recommended that we go with Security Archives. And that's where we're at, so. And their bid was a, you know, a flat amount, $169,000. Based on their experience, they didn't think they needed to do a, you know, an hourly type of presentation. So unless we change anything with regard to the scope of work, which could happen as we learn, as we learn and we go along, that would be the, the full amount of the expenditure for this consultant.
Before we have the motion, is there any questions? If not, I look for, did you want to read your motion?
Well, the motion that I would, which I'm happy to make, that we award the Document Management System Consultant Contract to Security Archives Data Management in amount not to exceed $169,000, except the township clerk is authorized to approve an additional 10%, should there be a document and significant deviation for the project's current scope of work or time proposal to be paid, and this be paid from the American Rescue Plan Funds.
Is there a second?
Support.
Motion by Clerk Brooks, put by Trustee Barnett.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you to you and Tom and the team for all your hard work on this. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Next, we go to considering approval of the cell tower lease for AT&amp;T, which will be presented by Township Treasurer Michael.
Thank you. So in addition to the court, this is another piece of real estate that we own and are able to rent on, dating back to 1992 when the tower was built. And however it worked out, my predecessor, Brian Keeps, was the official who negotiated for the renewal of those leases. The first one was Verizon, which was renewed in December of 2022. Since then, he began negotiating with AT&amp;T. I came in at the tail end of it and helped out, and got it to the point where it's at today. So in the packet, I list what I believe are the salient economic terms of the lease, and a couple others at the end, in terms of notification to us that they want access to the tower, or an updated equipment list that they're required to maintain every two years. And should there be any deviation from the approved equipment, we would have the right to action according to the lease. So again, I'm gonna give the credit to where it's due to my predecessor. He was able to negotiate a lease where we collect double the rent. So we're now gonna be collecting $78,000 a year in rent. We have a inflation factor of 5%, or the change in the CPI, whichever is greater. We also require AT&amp;T to pay $160,000 upfront as a capital contribution to, to maintenance and upgrades of the tower that, that we've had to take, although most of it has been taken by the telecom companies. The lease is five years. There are four extension options each of five years. There is a disincentive for them to hold over without negotiating a new lease after the fourth extension term, where if they hold over without coming to a new lease, they increase 100%. We increased the amount of equipment that they can put on the tower. Part of that is because we used to also host Sprint. Sprint, through their own technology upgrades and, and their own capital planning, removed their equipment from our tower, I believe within the last couple of years, right?
When they merged with T-Mobile.
So that was.
They moved over to their T-Mobiles.
Got it, so they, when they merged with T-Mobile, yeah. So other than that, where we stand is because Verizon increased the amount of equipment that they have on the tower, AT&amp;T wants to increase their amount of equipment, but we require a structural analysis of the tower to make sure that it can support and manage the wind resistance and all of that good stuff that the engineers look at. So we are waiting for AT&amp;T to procure this structural analysis and provide a final Exhibit C, which is the equipment list that they want to do on the tower. They are fully on board with all of the economic terms. They have a final copy of the lease, which was provided in the packet. And so what I'm asking at this point is the board to approve the lease and authorize the supervisor and clerk to execute that lease only upon receiving a counter-signed version from AT&amp;T. So they would, AT&amp;T would have to provide, would have to sign it first, and provided that they make no changes, which they have said they won't, we would be authorizing the supervisor and clerk to sign it on our behalf.
Can I add a little addition to that motion? With the understanding that a structural analysis will be provided to the township to supplement Exhibit C in the future. Thanks.
Do we have any questions?
I do. First, it's a significant improvement on the terms of the lease, so it was really well negotiated. I have one question for Dirk on the default, and where it deals with remedies. Can you clarify what the late fees would be if the, if the rent, monthly rent is late?
I think it depends on the terms.
Because to me, it wasn't really clear, like, if it was just a one late, or six late.
It's on 12D.
12D, yeah.
Okay.
It says for each default, for each default due to a late payment pursuant to 11A, landlord should charge a 10%, landlord being the township, should charge a 10% late charge. The default pursuant to 11A, which is if the lease is terminated by the tenant, I believe, the, it will not be considered cured until the rent payment at 10%. So the short answer is 10%.
Per month, or?
For every default.
For every default, right.
Okay. Thank you.
And I know you are correct that he did do a good job on, on negotiating this. It's not easy. Utility companies are not used to this kind of contract existing. We had some pushbacks where they even called our state representatives, who reached out to actually say, "Good job." Instead of, "Why aren't you like, being easy on the utilities?" So it's kind of nice to see that, that the pushback worked, and.
Well, this, this makes it expensive cell tower in Michigan.
Correct.
Of course.
Of course.
It's a beautiful township, so.
They're getting the best residents, right? So it was very hard fought, but everybody involved did a great job, from the IT side and Treasury side and legal. So thank you all three for what you did. If there are no other questions, I look for a motion.
We'll make the motion subject to the, the language that both Michael and Dirk have incorporated into the motion.
Perfect. Motion by Trustee Barnett.
Support.
By Trustee Kolinsky. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass. And next, considering establishment of the non-sufficient funds NSF fee policy by, again, Treasurer Michael.
Thank you. So this one isn't as glamorous as our rent in the last item, but, you know, my office is charged with collecting payments for not just taxes, water bills, permits, police reports, any, any kind of payment to the township. While most payments have moved online, especially many, many tax and water payments, we still get a lot of payments by check. When our bank returns that check for non-sufficient funds, we have to reissue the bill and initiate collection proceedings, not formally legally, but have to take steps to collect that, you know, call the people, get them on the phone, come back down here, you gotta give us a new check, et cetera. So the law gives us a provision to be able to charge a fee for this. This comes straight from MCL 600.2952, that if the payment is remedied within the first seven days upon notification from the Treasurer's office, we can charge a fee of $25. If it is remedied between eight and 30 days, we can charge a fee of $30. Goes beyond 30 days, we can seek additional damages through a legal process, and they are significant. Did I get that all right?
You did.
Okay. So I'm asking the board to officially establish this policy so that we can hopefully disincentivize these non-sufficient funds.
And there is, there is a resolution attached in the packet.
Yes. Sorry.
Thank you for actually catching too, that we were incorrectly charging. So you have actually saving residents and putting us in, in line with the state. So I appreciate that, too. Again, if we're overcharging, we're certainly not gonna continue doing that, and Treasurer found that out, so thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have one question. I, I understand, you know, the time is involved when you have to bounce the checks back and forth, and the labor time and the bank issues. But as far as payments go, which is our big one, there's a 3% fee the minute someone is late. So if their check were to bounce, they're gonna get the 3% and an insufficient fund, or?
That's if they pay it on the last day, and then.
And they aren't notified in advance.
And they, we find out that the check has bounced after the deadline. We don't, you know, so if somebody pays it a month in advance, and the check bounces, we can call them and say, "You've got 30 days to come in."
To make it good.
To make it good. And you'll charge a $25 or $35 fee, but they don't get the penalty. The penalty is only if they don't pay, if we aren't, we aren't paid for the taxes before the due date.
And reminder, we do get two months' notice to pay our taxes. I mean, it's not a quick turnaround.
Yeah, two and a half.
Oh, sure. And with online scheduling, I do that, it's, it's very easy, but I, you can kind of see where if somebody runs in the day before with a check, and then they're gonna get.
And unfortunately, that happens.
It should make sure that they're writing a real check with real funds behind it.
Well, yeah.
Because it would be illegal, I believe, to write a check that you know is gonna bounce.
Deliberately, right.
So again, this is not penalizing somebody that, this is, this is penalizing somebody that knows they're writing a bad check. So right now, we're actually charging more, which is consistent with all the other communities around us who are overcharging. Michael has found this issue, reduced us down to where we all should be charging, even though surrounding areas charge more.
More.
Yeah, so he's actually bringing us in line with the statute.
Yeah. And we do get charged a fee by our bank.
Yeah, so it really covers.
So it would cover that fee as well as the time it takes to print a new bill, mail it.
Sure.
Call the person, the payer, and say, you know, obviously.
And it's not fun.
All those actions.
It's not fun on either side. I've never bounced a check, and I don't intend to, you know, but accidents happen. So, no, and I understand, because especially it isn't just on taxes and, you know, it's, you get a lot of.
Water bills, it's, I mean, it's any, any payment.
Passport fees.
Yeah, any payment, yeah.
And it's not just checks, it's even electronic payments, right?
Yes, but the incidence of that happening are very rare.[1782.56] Yes, but the incidence of that happening are very rare.
With the same fees, bills would, you know, the fees would apply.
The same fees would apply to an electronic payment that is bounced, but we, the only time we actually pull money from people is when they sign up for ACH for their water bills. We don't pull money from taxes. So people have to initiate the payment from their bank for taxes.
Taxes.
Yeah, so...
Water bill.
Water bill, yeah. We have an ACH and every month, there's one or two people who change their bank account. They didn't notify us and we get a bounce and...
Yep.
So, yeah, but that's, that's not as frequent. So I have the law here, if anyone wants to read it, but if not...
No.
I spent, I spent a lot of time reading it to make sure we were doing this correctly. So, yeah, so there is a resolution. It provided in the packet and if...
Treasurer, do you mind if I...
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Sure.
How would, so if you do get notified that you have a bad ACH, what are the steps that your office does to notify those people?
So the first thing we'll do is if we have a phone number, we will call them. Otherwise, we will send them a letter to the address. I don't know that we'll have the copy of the check yet. We just get notified by the bank that the check was returned, but we don't have a copy of it yet. But we would notify the resident or pay, I call it a payer, because it could be non-resident if they're permit or something like that. We would do everything we can to get in touch with them and quickly, you know, it says if we mail notification, that's day one of our notification. So if they don't pay it within seven days, the fee goes up, but, you know, we do the best to track people down.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions? If I look for a motion.
I move to adopt the resolution to establish an NSF fee.
Motion by Clerk Brooks.
Support.
Support by Trustee Faqee, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Next, we move on to concerning approval, agreement agreement for Operations Officer, and it's going to be co-presented, because we also have, again, Chief Leroy is on there. Before I let him go into the nuts and bolts of what this position is, not everybody was on the board when we used to have this position filled, so it's not a new position, it's one that has not been filled since Chris Whitehead left. So he was the last one in that position. We frankly weren't staffed enough to fill this position. We have gotten to a point where we are fully staffed in firefighter, paramedics, so now we can offer this position again and still be fully staffed, which is a great feeling. We haven't been there in a very long time. From my aspect of not just the operations that this person involves, it also brings back some of that customer-facing, when you think of our residents and our community, you know, a lot of people are used to our Officer Nick Soli. He is kind of this, he's similar. He's not the exact, because there's some different operational ones with this, but when you think of the community part, the community knows Nick, he goes to HOA events, he's at public-facing events, he also is the one that maintains the media page for our cable department, does not do the police or fire. Those are run by actual police and fire. So he would be the similar version of this. And then bringing back something that we all have experienced and soon do is Fire Ops 101. To a different level at the, at the elected official level, you get to experience what it's like, but also that Fire Ops 101 of how to be safe in your home, what can you do? This is bringing back some very important programs to our community that have not been around for four to years, four to five years. So you'll, and I'm sure you saw it in some of our, the actual procedure and the policy that we put together to back this in. But I'll let John go through the nuts and bolts of, of the day-to-day operations, how this person is, will work, and then why he chose Kevin Cardinelli, who by the way is amazing, because he's been helping me with the community since 2018, when we started Winter Park over at the farm. He came and did some reading of being a firefighter and he brought, you know, some of the trucks and information out there and the kids loved it. So he's, he's already done a little bit of this to some degree, or I guess that was probably 2019, I think, 2019 maybe, after Chris left. John, want to speak to this position?
Sure. Thank you. The Operations Officer for the department's always been a jack-of-all-trades. I've kind of re-envisioned where I wanted to go with these relations-type position. So first and foremost, the goals of this job are to recruit, retain individuals and get together with the school district and create some sort of relationship, whether it be a, a club-type function or just get more kids involved in the fire service. Also with that, I would like to expand what Supervisor Walsh was talking about with the Fire Ops 101 that the politicians have went through and create a Fire Ops program that residents can go through, so they can see what the fire department does on a, on a daily basis. Those are two of the first things that I want this position to do in and of itself. And then also building out and creating that social media aspect that the police department has, whether it's through Facebook and all the other social media websites, and get community involvement with the services that we offer and the safety. This position is outside of the union and the reason why it has a contract that you guys, that the board has been presented, was because of when the unions were formed in the township back in 2020, this position was exempted by Merck as an administrative position that was not allowed in the unions. So those are, right off the bat, that why I, what I envisioned with the base of the, with the position, I chose Kevin Cardinelli through his years of experience. He has led at every level of the, of the department. He started as a firefighter, paramedic, he worked his way up through lieutenant, he's currently a battalion chief. He has done numerous programs with the community, as Supervisor Walsh was referencing earlier, and he is a perfect fit for this position. Has over 27 years of experience in the fire department and is a new challenge and a new, new vision that he wants to move towards and really make a success moving down the road. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I did also start pushing him already on competition with Nick. So just like you'll see Chief Leroy and Chief Gallagher compete a little bit with each other, because they're such good friends, Nick Soli and Kevin Cardinelli are very good friends. So when you think about, although Nick did get a few years head start on the social media platform, I'm imagining there might be some interaction between the two, some competitions of who gets more of this or that. So it'll be kind of fun to see how that, because anyone who follows our police page also sees that happening with other, you know, when we post, West Bloomfield Police will comment. So it also brings that community ban into by, by so. We could think of some competitions we could have for the guys. Anyone have any questions?
No, just a comment. John, I think it's just a great selection. I know that Kevin's a great person for this position and Chris Whitehead was such an outstanding person who was often, you know, the face of the fire department, in addition to the chief, of course. But with the additional responsibility you have for the position, I think it'll just be an outstanding representation of the fire department and...
I couldn't agree more. Yep, well said. Kevin's perfect.
If anyone else, how do I say, I look for a motion?
I got some comments, if you don't mind. So I'm actually very excited about this. I think everybody knows my background specifically in the fire service, but community relations is a very important thing. Getting it out there to the public, what we do on a daily basis and what the men and women of Bloomfield Township do is very important. I think everybody here knows recruitment and retention in our field is very, very tough right now. A lot of young people going into the trades, so finding somebody who can talk to our community and find ways to remain a public servant is near and dear to my heart. I don't want to ever reduce our standard here in Bloomfield Township and we need the best men and women out there to be the face of our organization. So putting somebody in that role, putting somebody with that responsibility is great. And I'm glad we can actually get our staffing up to where it needs to be for now only, now but for the future. And getting back on social media is a good thing. People look at that now, people get a lot of their news that way. It's not the old-fashioned way. And again, being able to have somebody who can run that and be involved is very important to me. So if anybody else, I would like to make the motion that we accept and for the new Operations Officer and give the chief the opportunity to hire the gentleman.
And support.
Motion by Trustee Kalinsky, support by Trustee Barnett, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thanks for sticking it out, Chief.
Thanks, John.
So next, we have vouchers for October 9th. We've all had a chance to look them over. Unless there's any changes or discussion, I look for a motion. Motion by Trustee Faqee, support by Trustee Murray, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. We have our last motion.
I move adjourned.
Motion by Clerk Brooks.
Second.
Support by Kalinsky, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? That does pass. Thank you everyone.